All right, uh, thanks for your patience. It's gonna call meeting back in order for 6:30. And is that as loud to you as it sounds to me?
Yeah, so John, you were working on that?
Uh...
No, we're here.
I'm just gonna...
Enable the wrong person here. The right person's not here.
Is that better? How's that audio? It's got a weird robotic tone. I'll work on my...my Lil. Um, after the long, uh, wait, we have public forum. And accordance to policy, DEH, if you have something that you want to share, you can go to the microphone, introduce yourself, your address, and you have... Three minutes. Let me see. All right, let me see. 6:31. No motion. We're gonna move to, uh, my favorite part of the meeting, the student update.
Yeah, so it's been, it's been a busy past couple of weeks in school. We had homecoming, spirit week. Um, and I know last meeting it was mentioned that, like... No complaints since then. Um, homecoming was very successful. It was a great student turnout and... Students were very active, showing a lot of school spirit. We were lucky to be able to change up some of the days from the past, so it's been more interactive and just different. Something, something a little boring to, but that's all I have.
My wife and I came and watched you play on Saturday and the parts of the soccer game, I was Sonopie proud that you all handled yourselves with emotional self-awareness and exemplary manners, because I was having a hard time sitting there after some of the hits, some of the students took. So to you personally and to your team, I was proud of you guys. All right, I went sort of out of order, so I apologize. Do you mind if we play through on the updates? The public, the non-public threw me off, so you can hang tight. We're gonna give you the floor. We're gonna be a rapt audience. We're gonna finish the updates. I got confused. Working our way to the right, Mr. Moneyan?
Can I go, um, down like your school first, then what I can do is I can lead us into the student presentation?
Perfect.
Does that work?
All right, great.
Patrick Gordon, this is your moment. So we have, uh, upcoming, some upcoming field trips. It's nice to get back out into the community, into the region. We had kindergarten getting out to Riverview Farm today to see the orchard. Uh, they were really excited to get out there, because just like everyone else during the course of school, their preschool experience was limited to the classroom. Um, our preschools will be getting out into the community. They're gonna be seeing the police department, fire departments, um, the dump, the transfer station, thank you, highway department, and there was one more, a farm? A farm. Thank you. Uh, and we're really excited and we're really grateful to the community who's able to host us and support our youngest learners getting back out there and, uh, see the community and build those connections. Um, we've been off and running with iReady math implementation. We had a really great day where we had, um, someone from Kirkland Associates come in. That's the company that owns iReady and do the second touch point for professional development with our staff. During that time, our Unified Arts, Sonopie Cruises and the Lake Sonopie Protection Protective Association did a, uh, a wonderful experience around the community, showing the kids the different areas. So it was nice to get back, get back out there from everyone's perspective. It's been about five years since they've been able to get out on the boat and have the kids see the community from that perspective. And, uh, the one thing that was shocking to a lot of our staff members, yes, COVID, many, 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 even of our fifth grade students haven't been out there. So it was nice to show them their community and talk about the community, talk about the ecosystem, and get them excited about the uniqueness around us in Sonopie. So with iReady, the first diagnostic's complete. We started looking at it, Tara, myself, and Ada. We've got some intervention groups. We had some COVID academic recovery money that we're gonna spend with Interventionist, who's gonna come in and work three different times throughout the year to do some math intervention for five-week periods. It's, uh, Betsy Bowen who used to work for us. Um, she's now retired, right? Not retired. So we're really excited about that. Everyone's, uh, everyone's really interested to see how this goes, to then see the next diagnostic window and see the kind of changes the kids go through. Um, a big part of my month was working on the emergency operation plan for the district, uh, pulling everything that existed. Uh, the Department of Homeland Security for New Hampshire put together a new template and off of all the new RSA's that Scott's, uh, sharing with us that are impacting policies. Um, there were quite a few that impacted how we react to emergency situations. So I spent quite a bit of time thinking about some of the worst things that could happen and have happened. Uh, but there will be training around that for our teachers and our students, and we're gonna be really cognizant of making sure it's not a effort that's, you know, traumatizing. So we're working towards that right now. Um, I'm at the step where starting to get ready to implement sharing this out with our staff members. So there'll be more of that to come as we certainly move towards that way. Uh, but there's nothing else I have to report. Any questions?
How's everybody doing with, uh, the project? Plugging along.
Project is going really well. Um, we've had heat since last week a couple of times, because of cold mornings. Um, and they're working out the kinks and getting it calibrated so that it doesn't end up being giddy at some point in the day, uh, which happens at least one day this week. So, uh, we're working on that. Uh, the best, the best part about this whole process to me is EEI, uh, working with those guys. Um, if we have a concern, any of us bring it to them. They, they solve it very quickly. Um, so we brought the heat thing to their attention, and today when I rolled into town, there were two trucks from the company involving the Cood Control Technologies, I think it's called, involving the thermostats and figuring out how to calibrate it and get it, get it right to where it is. So, um, we couldn't have asked for a better partner for this, I think. And I've been trying to make sure that our sta- my staff recognizes and celebrates that with them, because they have a direct contact with at least one of their employees daily.
That's great. A long-time staff member said it was very exciting when they're calibrating the ventilation, having a new effect, and she could feel it. She or he could feel it.
Yes.
All right, thanks for the update. Mr. Moneyan, bring us home.
All right, uh, just to kind of reinforce what Cam said, uh, we had a fun spirit week. The, uh, Student Council did a really nice job of changing some things up and coming up with some new ideas and, uh, not driving administration crazy at the same time, so they had, uh, one of their unique ones was... Don't run it backwards. Uh, she's bringing returns, kind of, uh, jumping on this... What they haven't done so already, you know, right in the middle of college applications. Mr. Cooney's gonna do, uh, college application workshop next week, and, uh, you know, the seniors are, the seniors are busy, but I think they're good busy at the same time. I'm gonna lead into, uh, the student presentations, and I've got Nick Polari here who'll be able to kind of take it home. And Mr. Reed is here, has been very helpful, so... Can anybody hear me okay? You know, one of the most important last couple of years is newspapers, who I think historically have done a really nice job of covering them. But they're becoming less frequent, you know? Uh, families, we have a daily newspaper. A lot of times you're going to two days a week. They're sometimes weekly, and they're cutting staff, and they just can't get everywhere they'd like to go. And so, um, they've always been really good to us, but they've told us, "We really apologize. We'd like to cover you more. We'd love to come to your school, but we just have not been able to, you know, to find enough people to do it, and we've had to cut down space, et cetera, et cetera." So Mr. Reed and I actually talked last year and said, "Look, is there something we can do with what we have here?" And we kind of decided, "Let's see if we can make better access of our, our webpage and get the kids involved with it." And so this year we started with having two students, Nick Polari's one, Liz DeShuyn's the other, who are doing an independent study, and their job is to report on the events at school. Now, primarily in the fall, it's, it's almost exclusively sports right now, but there's gonna be a law where we don't have sports between the fall and winter season. I think that's a time where they'll pick the activities that we do and the play and those activities as well and get a start to, "Okay, let's see if we can put them on the website." Uh, so I'm gonna have Mr. Reed in a second just to tell you some of the work they've done, and I'm gonna have Nick speak to you a little bit. But Nick, uh, just so you know, Liz DeShuyn does the soccer teams, and then includes the varsity, elementary, and the middle school. And there's gonna be more varsity articles necessary than middle school, but they know that they're going to cover everybody with certain amounts of time. And then Nick has the golf team and the volleyball team. I've got that right, right, Nick? And so what's great is Liz and Nick, almost every day, um, run, uh, they'll shoot me an article, and I'll just go through it and look for some grammatical things. They're actually pretty good on it, but sometimes they'll have a wording suggestion or something along those lines. And... Nick, can you speak a little bit about what that is intended? Nick is on the golf team and a senior and headed somewhere down south to college.
So we, I will email a coach and get an update about the day.
Thanks, Nick. And one of the nice things about us doing it is it's less on analyzing the game, and it's more about recognizing the students who are there, and they've done a really good job of... They'll tell what grade your student's in, um, they'll give a little bit of what the strategy might have been, and then they'll just give a little update, you know?
It has a lot of ads on it, and the, the concept is the NHI requires this for scheduling. So every high school is using this platform for scheduling. So that's for... And as Fuji, and that's a very technical term, I'd have to look that up, uh, as Fuji, is this website? Or to, uh, reassign referees and change the destination of, uh, where teams go ahead. Or, or formerly for kids, change the dismissal time so they're getting out earlier. So we're able to put some parameters around that. Uh, the other thing we can do with this website is it allows users to create accounts on the website. So if I take my school hat off with my dad hat on, I can subscribe to the calendars for my daughter's sports team, and those can then synchronize it to my calendar. And then this is where usually I get the deer in the headlights, and people are like, "Wait, we can do that?" And yes, we can do that. We have some documentation on our website, on the athletics page, about staying connected and how to, uh, create an account and how to get those notifications. So this type of little text here, if there's a change in the schedule, they'll email you depending on what you want for communication. So as much as, uh, we get the pushback on, "Well, couldn't you do this in Google or something?" Uh, no, we can't. We're, the NHI requires this, and this is the platform we're using and, uh, head out and play with it. So it's been fun this year to get, uh, Nick and Liz to create some more content. So it's more interesting to go there rather than just see, uh, where time would get dismissed or where the, uh, where the games ended, so it has some greater contact in there.
So Snap, send where's the microphone? If you guys, if anyone's interested, if you're, uh, from the Sonopie Royal High School, the Athletic News is a button down the other corner. That takes us right to that sonopieathletics.org where you can, uh, all this good stuff is happening. From our co-curricular menu, if you go to athletics, there are submenus there, and one of them is to stay connected. And this is where our end-users, how to create a fan account at sonopieathletics.org, how to add a team schedule to your calendar, and how to receive notifications, uh, from that. So that's on our stay connected page under the athletics on there. So there's all the information in there.
So John, the easiest way, uh, what we're still working on is... As possible, so people can just not have to hit, click four times to see how many...
We put a lot of information out, but we're always, we're often here, and now, so if you ever have good ideas, uh, on how to get information or where you get information, please send those along so we can, uh, consider adding those to, uh, the 17th, 18th, or 19th way when we're communicating. And again, sorry, Captain, for your jealousy.
That's great.
Just tying into that, I'm gonna have Mr. Reed speak a little bit to your book, which is our other student publication.
Me, me. Um, so over the years, your book, I have some names here from the high school. Several years prior to last year, it was run as a class. And last year, we made a transition to making it a student club. So we had a senior, Mary Blitt, who took over doing the yearbook as her senior project, and she was editor of the senior project, editor of the yearbook for her senior project. And, um, we loved the club, and we had students in grade six to 12 who could kind of be part of that. And with the help of a cohort of four or five students and lots of parents and other people giving us pictures, we put together the yearbook as, um, as a club, a co-curricular activity. So they came as a cost to the school and was well received by the students. We put a real emphasis on having lots of pictures and a little test, thinking that most people who go back and look through a yearbook aren't really reading a lot of the words. We're capturing the history of it, but really everyone loves to see their pictures in the yearbook. So we kept a low bar. We said we wanted to be like a Step Above a Shutterfly book. And maybe not, you know, we didn't really know where that comes from. We didn't really listen to it, but, um, the yearbooks are obviously each. So this year, we're running a M and S model, and Maria Anderson is our editor this year. And we went to a yearbook conference with other schools and got to swap yearbooks and get different ideas. Breheulak is our business manager, so she's heard of businesses who fund a lot of our yearbook through generous ad donations. And we have six, seven, eight grade students taking cameras to games and people capturing pictures of homecoming events. And anyone can email vouchers in to us at yearbook@sonopieschools.org. We love that open, capture things, and have it. Your book does a lot of that. Thanks.
Uh, no, just, you know, I really appreciate that. I think it's a good example of lots of people being...
Nick, nice job. Thanks. John too. Uh, superintendent update?
Thank you. Um, as Patrick spoke of earlier, we have, uh, Patrick did a lot of work on the emergency operation plan. I appreciate him digging in. We could, this year, I believe he said, we could this year, um, have sent in our last year's form on the old template, and the Homeland Security sent out a new template. It's pretty intensive. Um, given Patrick being new, he said, "Russ, I'll take on the challenge, and I'll take it on, and I'll put it in a new format." And so I really appreciate him stepping up. It also gives him a lot of ownership over that program, which I really think is critical as we, um, have things changed within our elementary school. It's good for the new administrator coming in to know and to look at those from an outside perspective and make determinations if they really are what we need them, are they doing what we need them to do, and are they doing really the safest procedures that we have in place? So I really thank Patrick for that time and energy putting that in. We've been working with, uh, I think I can call him Chief Cobb. Um, part of the new regulations of the legislation was that every year you need to do at least one intruder in each one of your buildings. So an intruder sort of lockdown, an active shooter. Um, you could do that either on a tabletop, you could do that as a live event. And so we haven't done, I think, a, a live actual drill, whether it's been an intruder or a tabletop or an evacuation. I think 2017 was the last time we did that. We recognized the folks who remember as the Emergency Management District of the State that year. Um, obviously some things happened in between there with, with the country, and so I think it's an opportunity for us to go back and dig in with Neil now being in charge, relooking at our procedures, looking at this new template, um, looking at new legislation, but really going back and doing some better training. And I, and I think that's one of the things that perhaps, not that we've missed, um, but that we can definitely focus on so that teachers are prepared to make decisions. And I think that's a lot different from what we had done in the past and what we were really told to do in the past. In the past, it was very scripted. If this happened, you do this, you do this, you do this, where now it's much more, we almost have to have you think as an individual and make a decision that's in the best interest of you and your kids that you're supervising at that moment. And that's, that leaves a lot of questions for folks. It leaves a lot of what is for folks. And so I think the more training, the more times you can go through things like that, people get a much better comfort. So heaven forbid we ever get into a situation where we have to react to a situation, people are comfortable in making that reaction. So looking forward to that.
What's the timeline on that kind of training?
Uh, well, it'll be a year long. So the, the, the specific training by legislation, we have to do 10 drills a year. Four of those need to be, um, something different than a fire drill, and one of those four needs to be sort of that intruder, if you will, drill. We have the year to perform those. Uh, the training, as far as I'm working with Neil, and he's gonna look at what's currently out there and what's sort of best practice to see if there's something we can bring in to get that training bundle stuck. Well, Andy's gonna talk a lot about the building, but it's just good to see the building, and I, I would agree with Patrick. Our folks at EEI have been great, uh, partners in this, in this endeavor and just there for us and willing to step up and do what is needed and go above and beyond at times. And the last piece I'll, I'll end with, so we, we've talked about our ability this year to staff, and we've done a super job with that compared to a lot of other districts. We're still missing, um, some people within our district that we have positions that have either opened or, um, people have decided to move on or our needs have changed. And so right now we have administrative assistant position at the SAU, um, a custodial position that's still open that we've been looking for all summer long, a food service position, and Ms. Gere is always looking for paraprofessionals, uh, to join our ranks. And so what we've developed or what we're in the process of developing is an employee incentive recruitment plan. And so if you have a cousin, a relative, a neighbor that's sitting at home that may be looking for a job or a second job or a third job, you bring them in, we hire them. By you bringing them in, we're gonna give you an incentive, a cash incentive, if that person fulfills a certain amount of time in their contract. Um, that'll, again, we're hoping that through word of mouth with people who we already employ, we'll go seek maybe other people that might fit in our district to fill some of our positions when they open. We'd also look at that for things like some of our extracurricular positions. You, you saw last year I was nominated to be a coach. Um, didn't have the time to quite do that or the expertise in that, in that specific sport, um, but we're having trouble finding coaches. And so maybe some, Ed goes, somebody who's a really good basketball coach and knocks on the guy's man or woman's door and says, "Hey, middle school basketball, I think you'd be great. Come on, go give it a try." We hired them, and it gets an incentive for giving that person that recognition and giving that name to us, and if we hire them, then we... So an employee incentive recruitment plan. We're, we're developing that as we speak. Any way we can get good people in the door. That's it for my report.
I was at a national conference last week, and it was all about hiring challenges, and we're not even to our part yet. Under the docket, is that it? Let's see. School board topics, things you're hearing, wanna share? I have to have. It's an opportunity. It's more intimidating than the conversation likely will be. Would you like to take it from here?
First, I will make a motion that we approve the first reading of the policies that are so outlined in this meeting's agenda. Add a second. I refrain from discussing all of the policies listed on the agenda. I'll give you a quick, uh, few comments, I guess. And just a reminder, the, um, if you go to the agenda on the website, go through the agenda, all of these policies are posted following the agenda on that same PDF. So, you know, I would encourage you to look at that. We've got a second reading at next month's meeting. They're out there. Look at that, you know, contact, uh, Russ, myself, if you have any questions. We took a, uh, an email a few weeks ago. Someone had a policy question. We got back to them, uh, you know, within a day. So, um, give it a look. Uh, we've talked about the, uh, school safety program and the emergency operations plan already. I think it is worth noting that since 2015, we do a voluntary review every few years. So we have tried to stay ahead of the curve on that. But I think it's a neat opportunity this year. I was really glad, uh, to hear that our new building administrator, along with our new police chief, are both involved, because I think having two, uh, fresh set of eyes will, um, pay dividends. And maybe we'll come up with some, you know, additional thoughts and ideas along those lines. But, you know, we are trying to stay ahead of the curve on that. The other thing that we seem to update on a fairly regular basis is the cybersecurity, uh, policies, the record destruction policies, and that's obviously a big, big thing in the corporate world. The bad guys are coming at us every day on the, uh, in the cyber world. And so it's good that we're, again, trying to stay ahead of the curve on those issues and, uh, be where we need to be. Uh, the policy IMBA distance education, I think it's worth noting that due to the new RSA, um, the scope for distance education and remote learning has really been narrowed down to two instances, either weather-related or something that's, uh, requested by a parent for a bargain. You know, we can't just do remote learning, you know, for the sake of it. And so, you know, that's something that's new based again on, uh, new RSA's coming out of Concord. Student rep on the school board, um, that's something that, again, we've been ahead of the curve on for a while. We've always tried to have a student representative, which I think is a wonderful thing. This new policy, again, based on some new RSA, the student council essentially, you know, is going to decide who's going to be involved and how that person is selected. And of course, you know, the administration will be there to, you know, make sure that that process is happening in the right way. But I think it's neat to recognize that that's something that, you know, is essentially going to be in the hands of the students, not the school board, not the administration. So that's something new. And then there's a lot more. Policy JJJ does button down the participation of students that live in Sonapee but don't come to this school every day, homeschool students, chartered school students, the updates to JJJ. Just make sure that there's an equitable process in place for those students to be involved, whether it's an athletic team or some other, you know, extracurricular activity. So again, go to the website, go to the agenda, and there's a lot of very interesting reading. I think that's it. Shall we vote?
We're ready for most, Russ. Can we shoot a little bit of policy?
I'll sit back here. It is noted in the agenda, please say aye. Thank you for doing. Make a motion to draw policies B, C, D, I, C, I, A, I, H, V, G, R, T, B, S, A. Second, second minute discussion, you want to explain it?
Well, just, you know, when we withdraw a policy, it's usual because of the new RSA's we're merging two policies into one and trying to clean things up some more. And so I think that's what's happening with all three of these, basically. You can correct me if I'm wrong. Russ, I think we're going to deal the policy.
Okay. I'll give you a $50,000 budget. Motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Nice and tidy, thank you very much. I look for a motion to approve the proposed 2022-2023 budget timeline. The, I lost it here. Any question for commentary? Real quick for the audience, if you're not familiar with the budget process in Sonapee, we have four advisory budget committee meetings. To wrap up last details and finalize. So we appreciate the folks that were in the prior meetings that were volunteering for that. And several of those happened, happened before board meetings. So it'll be done by, with that project by, um, 9/77. All right.
Misprint there. It's the 23-24 calendar, not the 22-23.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I looked at the other one. Yeah. The calendar's right, so it'll show up in the right year. 23-24 budget calendar timeline, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. On the end of this, looking for a motion to approve the proposed extracurricular activities. Make a motion to approve those extracurricular positions. Positions. All right. Any discussion, commentary, teasing? Thanks. We only have two TBDs to be determined on. Quite a long list, so I appreciate folks raising their hands in quiet moments to take care of the extracurricular. All right, I'll table it, approving the extracurricular positions as noted, please say aye. All right, again, I think I'm going to thank you, the many, many folks, many teachers that are stepping up to do those extra things and make Sonapee special. Thank you for that. The project update. Can't wait to hear from Andy.
Well, our modular, we turned and got up to the top of the hill. It definitely did not look like an easy feat, but it made it up there. First time I got to see the modular was today at our meeting and toward that. And it's a trailer, you know, it's a mobile classroom. So it's new, it's clean, it's proper sized, 900 square feet of classroom. I think from the roadside, it looks pretty good, considering, you know, what it is. But, so we're in the process now of trying to get that online, hoping to have that online by mid-November. And what we've done is, because we've anticipated that this is going to stay there for probably more than a year, so we've run underground heat lines from the biomass plant into that modular area. They come standard with electric heat and electric ventilation system, so we're going to keep that and use the electric ventilation and AC. But we want to run hydronic heat so that we get the benefit of our biomass plant. So we got to run some, some additional heat out there in the modular itself and hook that up. But we feel like that'll be online, or EEI feels like that'll be online by mid-November. So we could actually start utilizing that space. So that's good news. The ventilation system is up and running, which is really nice. Spent a lot of time just kind of listening in classrooms today to see what kind of white noise would be in them. And I was really surprised that, for the most part, I mean, just two people talking and it just disappears. So it's not super loud. Five out of the six units are online. We had a power grid switch over, how long? Two weeks ago, was it? Two weeks ago? So we're up on our new power grid. One of the units needs, needs an electrical fuse. It came from the factory bad, but all other five units are up and running. That said, they still need to go in and measure the volume in every room, fine tune how many, you know, amps go to the unit and. So that said, we're a ways away. I bet we're at the first of the year before. Controls are online, everything is fine tuned and running, but hugely forward, we actually have fresh air in the school. So right now. It was a little hot in there today. There was some miscalculations going on and some things that didn't happen correctly with the rooftop units that it didn't measure air temperature correctly. So some of the classrooms got a little warm, I guess they're around 80 degrees. But that got adjusted and we're getting back down where it should be. Punch list is ongoing and continuing. I talked to Mike today in length about it, which is from EEI. He feels like January 1st, they will be, they'll be done and complete, which I was very pleased to hear because, I mean, that's a lot of work to get done in less than a year, you know? The library is open, which is great. That's, that's open, and they were getting ready for a book fair. It looked awesome in there. New lights in there, which are great, you can actually see. The stage is getting redone. I'd say we're a couple of weeks off from having the stage complete, but it's looking really nice. The biomass plant, so that's where all the parts have shipped, which is the good news. The big main parts are all here. We're missing the silo, which is a key portion of it, and a few individual parts that will make the biomass plant run. But the good news is they have all shipped, so they're all on their way. Unfortunately, some are coming from Austria. We're hoping that the biomass plant will be up and running somewhere around the 1st of December. And we're hoping that we can actually have an open house after the 1st of the year, after everything's been fine tuned and everybody can walk through and sit. This weekend, so you're not seeing a lot happening during the week right now because school's in session, but every weekend they have subcontractors in there. This weekend, they're doing a bunch of ceiling tile work, paint touch up, things like that. But all in all, I got to say, I'm very pleased with what's going on.
Sure. The one thing I would like to point out off of that, the request from EEI to do some work during the week, our teachers have been unbelievably flexible. There was the need to get the copper piping insulated before we cranked up that heat on everyone, and so they had to do it during a Thursday, I want to say. And everyone was very flexible and an amazingly really difficult task, actually, and almost everyone got done within the 45 minutes that the person had to get in there and get out. So our teachers have been unbelievably flexible. Like, you got to ask them to be a little more flexible. Uh, the morale's been pretty good, I'd say. Of course, our teachers, they would have loved to have been in the building three weeks before they got in, and that was hard on some of them. But I, I helped frame it for them that they deserved a little bit more time off after the last couple of years. And all of them have come around to appreciating that time off. It was a much needed extended vacation. From there, it seems as though morale involving the building project, you know, they're excited after two years of having COVID and knowing that they didn't have great moving air. Everyone's really appreciative of the community, what's, what's been done. It's certainly, I got to watch it a little bit more than they did, getting in the building this summer and just, you know, the sharing with them how, where they put things inside of walls in their classrooms. They have no idea, and they're really just excited by what's going down next.
Thank you very much. Before you do enrollment, I forgot on the process to close our public comment, so I'm doing that on the record because I missed doing that. Do you want to talk about enrollment?
Sure. You all have the document in front of you. Not really much to see here, folks. Again, this is a yearly requirement that we do October 1st with the state, for the state of New Hampshire Department of Education, it needs to be reported. We did so. Current enrollment right now, as of October, excuse me, October 1st, is 181 students at the elementary school, 219 students at the middle high school, for a total of 400. If you want to do a little comparison, last year, the elementary school was 184, the high school was 217. They were at 401 total. Again, just the yearly report, I think a lot of that gained some, maybe more recognition than it needed over the last few years, given the building project. But this is something that we are required to do yearly as a school district for the state of New Hampshire.
It's nice to see the state, yes. That's what the NASDAQ projection by John did, so we would be at, that was five and a half years ago. It's tracking 401 and 400, that's where. Excellent. Good news. Round and third.
23-06, 280,007, 68, 66.
Any discussion? It's not to lose the document. All in favor of, uh, man if I, please say aye. I'm seeing not a lot of energy in the board, I'm going to make a motion. 84. Discussion. All in favor, please. Items for next board meeting. Schedule.
The elementary school. I'll give you a building update. Most of it will be around budget.
Yeah. At some point, I'd be nice to hear.
Have the biggest effects.
Yeah, just in a more setting, just a verbal. Maybe have a little power flowing, it's nice to do it, I guess, but I think just reinforcing.